The time is 6:01 and the regular meeting of the Denison, City Council of Denison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation will be given by Pastor Gene Emerson, New Beginning Fellowship Church.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, Psalm 29:2 says, "Ascribe to the Lord the glory, do his name." We want to take an opportunity to glorify you tonight in this meeting. Father, we thank you for what you're doing. We invite your presence here this meeting. We thank you for our Father, for our city, and we thank you, Father, for our mayor and our city council, and all those civic leaders and those that helped to make this city great. And we ask your presence and your blessing here tonight in the business that we do. Father, may we glorify your name? May we bless one another? And, Father, we pray for peace, and we ask your joy to be in our midst. In the powerful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we are honored to have with us Girl Scout Troop 1414, who's going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one state, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, ladies. One of the things that we get to do in our city is to recognize those people who make this city work, and that's our amazing employees. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Judd Rexx, and I'm going to join him on the council floor while we recognize some people who have hit some major milestones in their career.
Good evening. The mayor mentioned we have the honor to recognize some of our employees for being certain milestones. He's a member of the tenured of the city of Denison. We have most of them here tonight. One was taken away on a family emergency. So as I call your name, please, there's up here, and we want to present you with a certificate. So, Randy, Randy Phil up here. Randy serves in our Parks and Rec Department, and she's been recognized for five years of service with the city of Denison. She's also here in utility building before that, so she served many different organizations. Anthony Woodson, Public Works. Sergeant Travis Mulcahy in Police Department. Sergeant William Barry. James Subblefield. These last three have been tenured of service. Forgot to mention that. Angus Evans is not with us tonight. He's over at the laboratory in their water treatment plant. So he had tenured of service. We'll give that panel to you soon. And finally, Herman Ho of the White Water Treatment Plant. Herman's in here fifteen years now. So we love Team Denison, and we have some fantastic members of the team here tonight. We need to recognize you. Please join me in the background for the service.
You have everything you need, Mayor? Yes. Thank you. Also tonight, we get to present a proclamation to the Red River Railroad Museum. In 2018, shortly after we relocated in this beautiful city hall, the Denison Arts Council launched Art in the Hall program. And it has been a tremendous success. We are so proud of the displays that we get to have in our city hall. And recently, we just completed an exhibit of numerous treasured articles and artifacts from the Red River Railroad Museum, which captures the history of the MKT railroad. And of course, you know, that was what all our city began, the post of the railroad. And as a community, we are blessed to have such a collection and someone, and several someones, who faithfully preserve these memories for us, so that they will be here for many generations to come. I would have invited Roy Jackson up to hear this proclamation, but he happens to be sick. So instead, I'm going to ask Doug Cooper, who is the chairman of the Red River Railroad Museum Board, and other board members and volunteers to come up and join me while we read this proclamation. He got a new vehicle, well, that's important. All right. Whereas the city of Denison strives to maintain positive community relations by working with local organizations, agencies, community members, and businesses to create lasting partnerships. And whereas, in pursuit of those partnerships, the Art in the Hall program began in 2018 as a collaborative effort between the Denison Arts Council and the city of Denison to foster community awareness, engagement, and participation in the arts, culture, history, and future of Denison. And whereas, the third installment of the program featured significant selections from the collection of the Red River Railroad Museum located at 101 East Main, chosen by guest curator Roy Jackson, the museum's volunteer director. And whereas, the Red River Railroad Museum graciously shared these cherished memories of Denison's history of the Missouri, Kansas, Texas railroad. And whereas, the city of Denison and Denison Arts Council recognizes the importance of the valued partnership with the Red River Railroad Museum. Now, therefore, I, Janet Gott, as mayor of the city of Denison, Texas, do hereby proclaim that the Red River Railroad Museum be commended for their partnership in the Art in the Hall program and for continuing to preserve this beloved part of Denison's rich history. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, Denison, Texas. And those of you who did not get to see the exhibit here in city hall, please go down to the T D D Co. and see it. It is amazing what we have and the history that history preserves. And these folks right here get their credit for doing that. They are all volunteers. Plus Roy. As I previously mentioned, the Art in the Hall program is a collaborative effort between the Denison Arts Council and the city of Denison. And when the Arts Council brought this idea, I mean, it was embraced because this display gives our citizens an opportunity to see art and enjoy it, and they might never get to do that without a day and a night here in our city hall. So we are very, very grateful to the Arts Council for providing this opportunity for our citizens. And tonight, we have with us Linda Angleton and Ms. Barre Stewart, who have a presentation to make.
Denison Arts Council treasures the collaboration that we have with the city and the Art in the Hall endeavor. Our first exhibit was curated by councilperson Ann Kander, author and historian, and it featured original photographs of historic manuscripts. The second exhibit was curated by Mary Karen. And in the hallway, please be sure, if you haven't seen it before, one of Mary's extraordinary photographs of a bank vault door that is in this building is right there. And Denison Arts Council was pleased to present to the city of Denison's Art and History Collection this photograph to commemorate this historic event when we moved into this new building. So if you don't know Mary's picture, have a look at it. If you had a chance ever to look at one of those two vault doors, they are extraordinary. They were made by the foremost vault door makers in the world. And there were statues produced by this company that withstood the Adam Barton impression. So we still have these doors. We treasure this collaboration. Mayor Janet Gott, city manager Judd Rexx, and director of community engagement, Sonny Matthews, have been our allies in this building, and have worked with us in close collaboration and beautiful exhibits that we've been able to stage here because of their vision, the importance of community art, and their collaboration with Denison Arts Council and our creative community. Denison Arts Council has a second presentation to make to the city of Denison's Art and History Collection. And the artist is here. And the picture is one that our own mayor thought might be a good addition to the collection. And it is, as you see, our historic post office, Richard. Richard Gardini is the artist. He was featured in the shadow that Mary Karen curated. We are proud to bring this to the city's collection. And I would also like to introduce to you the next exhibition, which we just finished hanging today, and it is the artwork of the president of Denison Arts Council, Barre Stewart. So be sure and look at it. It's beautiful and colorful, and you will enjoy it. And I can kind of teach you things and enjoy it. Oh, okay. I guess we could look at it. There will be a plaque beside this picture when we decide where to hang it, as there is by Mary's picture.
Oh, wow.
Nice, huh?
Beautiful.
Beautiful. Our post office. You should be in here. So, Mayor, thank you for your appreciation of Mr. Gardini's art, one of our creative geniuses in this town. What he first. Thank you all. Thank you. And thank you, Linda, and Barre, and the entire Arts Council for all that you do and all that you contribute to our community. You truly do make difference in the lives of our kids. And Mayor Gott, others of our board, come with us tonight. Would you please stand and let us recognize you?
Oh, hello.
I would like to say, oh. I'm not on the board, so I don't know who in this case is all this. All right. Thank you.
Item three, public comments. At this point in each council meeting, time is set aside so that citizens may speak on any action item listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the city clerk prior to reaching the public comment section of the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes and must address items that are listed on the action, action items listed on the agenda. These are comments only, and you should not expect any dialogue between the citizen and the council or staff. Comments related to the public hearings listed on the agenda will be heard when that specific item is heard on the agenda. Is this the only card we have?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I call forward Roy Reed.
I'll wait till you call up on the agenda if you don't want to.
No, it's on the consent agenda, so this is your opportunity to speak.
Well, I don't know what good it's going to speak if you want to answer our questions. So what good is it for anybody to come up here and speak if we can't address our council and expect to get an answer back? That's ridiculous on something you're going to vote on. So obviously, I'm here about the fees you want to start to charge for sending a firetruck to Iraq and all this, and this is just another affront on the poor people of Denison to raise prices of things. I believe that this is probably... We already taxed to the max and paid to fund the fire service with tax dollars. Now you want to come back and charge people that use the service. I understand this is done in other places, but we're not other places. We're talking about Denison, Texas. We're talking about the last three years of problems with the Denison Fire y'all have refused to address because, as he puts it, Mr. Rexx, "We just want to show when we want to talk about the problems." That's what he told me. So instead of answering it, so why don't you take this opportunity to table this and have a town hall meeting and listen to what the people have to say where they can ask questions and get answers, instead of sitting up here and just wasting our breath, which I'm glad to do because I've got plenty I can talk about, because you don't want to answer questions. You don't want to be accountable to the public like you're supposed to be. That is what you're here for, is to be accountable to us. So if we can't answer questions about something you're going to vote on, how are you accountable? The question is, you're not. So to get down to it, I believe that y'all probably have come up with this because of the $1.2 million that you're losing by privatizing EMS and not getting that money that you're billing out there. That's pretty plain to see. I also asked last month, you know, where's that $1.2 million shortfall that was budgeted already for this year going to come from? And the only answer I could get was, "We budgeted for it." Well, my question is, where at? Well, now we know. You're going to come back to us again for more money. You're going to have this presentation on downtown. "Oh, yeah, that looks nice." We've got a lot of problems to be handling in this town before we waste $45 million to redo this downtown. I mean, it's just the way it is. You know, this town has got so many other things, we can't even fix the potholes in the streets. There's four blocks of Sears that have been torn up for a year and a half where they fixed the water line. Still rock in there, holes everywhere. There's a hole on Morton Street that I know of 11 vehicles hit and had flat tires. Still, nothing done about the streets. You want to keep coming back for more money, more money, no matter what form it is, if it's taxes, if it's fees or whatever, when you can't even take care of the problems we have with the money you already have. I say no. You should table this and listen to the people.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Say it.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by council member Doty. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. I do not often comment on consent agendas, but I want to take just a minute to address item 4G and express our appreciation to Mr. David Means and Mr. Mike Wright, two of our citizens who saw an opportunity to make our community better. And for the success of our streetscape, we needed to have off-main public parking. And when approached, Mr. Means and Mr. Wright joined with the city to move forward and move this project in the right direction. So it is because of citizens like you that we are able to move toward becoming this community of choice that we desire to be. So David and Mike, thank you so much. Item five, public hearing. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property located at 1502 West Johnson, Denison, Texas, from commercial to two-family duplex. Ms. Murray.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before I begin, I would like to make an introduction. We have contracted with our recruiting firm and have hired an interim planning director, Manjit Ranu, and I'd like to introduce him tonight. Would you stand up? He hails from California, and he's going to be joining us for a while until we are able to hire a full-time planning director. So I want to introduce him tonight and let you meet him.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
All right, let's get started. So this application is a request to rezone the property from commercial to two-family duplex. The property owner purchased 1502 West Johnson with the intention of combining the two lots into one to serve as an addition to their homestead. Single-family uses are permitted in two-family duplex zoning, which will allow for conformance with zoning ordinance in the existing structure. Can you see up in the upper right corner, the blue? See the pin mark there? There's an existing home on the green lot next to it. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this application on their meeting on the 14th, and they did recommend approval to the council. This is a public hearing, and I am available to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Murray.
So they're combining the two lots, but it'll be two separate homes? Is that, or do they plan to build a duplex on the two lots?
There is one existing home on the lot to the left, and they own both. They're going to be, after, if this gets approved, they're going to do a replat and make it one lot.
Okay.
And just have their home there.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions from council? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property located at 1502 West Johnson from commercial to two-family duplex.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by council member Hander. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property located at G-0767 PC Martin Survey, abstract 0767, from commercial to single-family five. Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. This applicant is requesting to rezone the property from commercial to single-family five. It's a similar circumstance. The lots adjacent to the property have been developed in a residential fashion. Future development in this area will also continue to be residential in nature. It is in conformance with our 2018 comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval at their meeting on the 14th. Staff also recommends approval. This is a public hearing, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murray. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property located at G-0767 PC Martin Survey, abstract 0767, from commercial to single-family five.
Second.
There is a motion by council member Hander and a second by council member Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Victron Energy, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is proposing incentives up to $140,000 to aid in the development of a 15,000-square-foot $7.5 million travel center to be located at the corner of State Highway 75 and 91. This project will promote local economic development and predicted annual sales estimated at 6.8 million a year in merchandise and restaurant sales in the city limits, and also an estimated 40 full-time employees. The Denison Development Alliance is also offering up $60,000 in incentives for the cost of the sewer line expansion in support of investment to the city. This incentive would be a rebate of ad valorem taxes paid to the city over time. The agreement has been drafted. It has been shared with Victron Energy, Inc., and is subject to final legal review. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Murray. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the proposed agreement with Victron Energy, and authorize the city manager to execute the same, such to file legal review and prove.
There is a motion by council member Greenleaf and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 7A, project updates. Receive an update and on the D3 Designing Downtown Denison Project. Mr. Rexx.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm excited to share some updates on our D3 project, which has made substantial progress and lots of changes since we last updated the community in November. You recall that we held an open house for, I would call them the not-quite-so-100% plan. We were pretty close to 100%, but maybe it was 99. So our project manager, Bobby Attaberry, is here tonight, and he and I are going to tag-team the presentation a little bit. Is there, if you guys don't mind flipping through the slides for me? So the, really, four things we want to touch on. I'll kind of talk about the TERES funds, provide a quick update on that, look at the cost estimate for Phase 1 and how we're going to approach that, and then Bobby will talk about our construction manager at risk process and the timeline for moving the project forward. This slide shows what we projected the values in the TERS area, which covers kind of greater downtown Dennison, what they were projected to be throughout up to fiscal year 2020 and then what they actually are. So our increment, meaning the added new value to the district, is approaching about $50 million, 47.4 million. We estimated that to be about 39.6, so we're close to a 20% higher than we expected. That's good. We were conservative in our projections so that we didn't kind of overlook that. So the for fiscal 2020, the TERS will generate 311,000 annually and that number's expected to grow. That's really how we're paying for the project, is the money generated through property taxes downtown are put back into downtown. That's basically how we're funding the project. As far as the cost estimates for Phase 1, this is based off of the 99% plans the tool design finished or had completed in November. These estimates are current as of December, so you can kind of see the breakdown into what were the different components of the project. There is built into each of these numbers about a 10% contingency and so overall you're looking at about 1.3 million in contingency. We want to keep that built in there just to be safe on the planning side of the project because when we start to tear up the streets, you never know what we're going to come across. We want to be safe and have some money set aside for that. So I'll make a couple notes on this slide. One is that the utilities budget for this project has expanded quite a bit. As we got into the development of the underground water and sewer and drainage lines, we did add some extensions to connect in with the greater network of downtown. And so we're doing a lot more water and sewer work than we had anticipated in the beginning just to make sure that it ties in well with our network of water and sewer lines downtown. And really, it'll help to benefit the entire water system and sewer system around the downtown area. The other thing is that this Phase 1 of D3 and the area is basically at the bottom from a drainage standpoint. And so we're kind of fronting a lot of project costs for drainage in Phase 1 because we have to handle all the storm water for the future phases of D3. So the utilities part of the budget has increased quite a bit really for those two reasons. However, overall, the numbers are pretty conservative. We feel good about where we're at and that if anything, the numbers will go down as we proceed with the project. So approaching the funding, really kind of four techniques or methods that we're moving forward with. Obviously, the TERS fund is going to fund the majority of the project. We are recommending that because of the additional utility improvements in the project, that we use about 2 million from our CIP to cover the additional water and sewer work. We have some savings from some of our recent projects that were put out to bid through the capital improvement program and we may see that moving forward. So we feel like we could help fund those improvements to the tune of 2 million dollars for the utility work. Value engineering, you know, certainly we want to cut project costs where we can, but also want to be cognizant that this is an amenity project and a lot of the things that we're putting into the project are going to help generate economic activity. So, you know, we've kind of identified about $172,000 worth of savings already. When we hire the construction manager and they go to work with Tool Design Group, we expect that they'll kind of generate some additional savings and look at different methods of constructability on the project that will help lower the cost as well. That's one of the benefits of the process. So the example, one example, because we did this on THF Park as well, is that for park benches, bike racks and kind of the fixtures, furnitures and equipment that we purchased for the project, which will be for D3 as well, rather than have a construction manager procure those and go through that process, we do that in-house and there's some savings there through cooperative purchasing opportunities for that equipment. So we saved, I think on THF, about 30,000 or 40,000 going that route. It'll be similar on this project as well. So there's some innovative things we can do on that front to help save on the project. And then financing options, we're working with our bond issuance counsel and consultant to kind of cater the financing toward what the TERS can afford to pay for, again, working within those constraints. So there's some work with our bond counsel on that. Next slide shows really how that would break down. So our estimated cost, 13.1 million, 2 million from CIP, what we found in value engineering so far, kind of our target for the TERS bonds would be to issue about $11 million. Again, we hope that number can come down, but that's what we feel confident the TERS can fund at this time for Phase 1. And that's kind of the direction we're working. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bobby to talk about the construction manager at risk process and then what our next steps are going to be on the project.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I haven't got to see y'all in a while. I want to talk to you a little bit about the procurement process. Basically, we have two methods available to us, one being the standard procurement process where we would go out for bids, design the project, see who the low bidder was, make a determination if they were qualified and award the bid. The construction manager at risk process allows us to actually go out for requests for proposals to get qualifications of general contractor types who can come in and put this job together for us, help us value engineer it. There'll be a third-party review, if you will, of the plans and documents that the Tool Group has designed. So they're probably going to see a few things that we didn't see and Tool didn't see that could help us cut some costs down. The big advantage is at the end of it, they give us a guaranteed maximum amount not to exceed for the project. So if they tell us it's going to cost X dollars, then that is a guaranteed maximum amount. If it goes over that, it's on them. It's not on us. Now, I will caution you that that doesn't... That's for everything that's in the scope of what they look at. If there's something that comes in that's out of scope, if we find something in the construction process that nobody knew about, there was no way of planning for it and it's going to cost extra to do that, then that would come across as a change. But the risk is much less than it would be if we simply just had a contractor on low bid and had to issue a change order every time they find something. So it's the same method that we used on the park. It's the same method that we used on this building. And we're allowed to do that because we're changing the use of this street from basically to more of a pedestrian-type facility that has events and things like that. By narrowing the street, by putting all the amenities in that we're putting, then it allows us to be able to go with the construction manager at risk process according to the law. So that's what we're going to be doing in this going forward. We already have the request for proposals out on the street. It's being advertised as we speak. Those were sent out on January the 27th. On February the 11th, we will have a pre-submital conference. So we'll have a meeting for anybody that wants to come that's going to propose on this project. And we'll have the engineers here and we'll answer any questions they have. If they come up with something that we're not sure about, it gives us an opportunity to clear that up before this is actually due back into us. And then the deadline for those proposals to come back to us is February the 26th. And we will take those proposals and with the help of the committee that we've been using for this project all the way through, we'll try to narrow those down. We have no idea how many we'll get, but we'll try to narrow those down to a maximum of about three. And there will be a very strict scoring process that each member on that committee will have in scoring the different things on the different proposers. When we get that, then we'll make a selection and then we will have the review in April and May and approve the guaranteed maximum price contract in May or June. Once we get that done, then we're ready to begin issuing a notice to proceed and start construction. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Atterbury?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. That was information only, so it does not require any action from the council. Item 7B, receive an update on Dennison on Ice 2019 season. Ms. Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, I would like to thank each of you for your servant hearts that drives you to support programming such as Dennison on Ice to enhance the quality of life for our great community. Tonight, I would like to present you with an overview of this past season of Dennison on Ice. The Parks and Recreation Department took the helm innovating the venue with new and exciting programs, marketing campaigns, and atmosphere to really make Dennison come alive with that hallmark feeling. Planning for this season began as early as January of last year. Our team gathered around the table and dissected feedback from the community, staff and guests to determine how we might best continue to enhance the ice rink and promote it in a way that would create a buzz that would drive our local and regional traffic for increased participation in the venue. As a result of these efforts, we renegotiated the contract with ice rink events for a 40% larger ice rink that would include clear walls along the north end. Staff expanded the decorations to include additional lighting, garland and a beautiful backdrop for the selfie photo area. Dennison on Ice saw more than 7,000 skaters and we estimate an additional 1,200 of non-skating guests. The weather played in our favor to allow us with only one day of weather-related closure. With the increase in rink size to allow for more skaters on the ice at any given time and the added programs, attendance increased 15% over last season with an increase of 35% in average daily attendance. It is important to note that the ice rink was only open 38 days compared to 45 days the previous season. Had the rink been open the same number of days as last year, we estimate attendance could have been up 36% over last year. One of the initiatives the team elected to implement was a tiered ticket pricing strategy. Staff felt this would provide a more family-friendly presence, so we offered adult tickets for $10, youth 12 and under were $7, and seniors 55 and older and military veterans were $5. Frequent user cards, which were good for 15 visits, were available for the price of 10 visits and offered cardholders an enticing savings. There were two unique discount ticket days offered. The first was a teacher appreciation day and the other was a first responder appreciation day. These appreciation days allowed educators and first responders to participate in ice skating and bring three additional guests for half-off ticket prices. The Parks and Recreation concession trailer, Sporks &amp; Rec, was onsite for the season to offer a wide variety of concession selections. Concessions revenue was up 61% over last year as a result. In this chart, you see that the largest expense for Dennison on Ice is the ice rink installation itself. What is not measured and I consider to be priceless is the quality of life impact that is provided for our community and regional guests. The memories created and shared will last families and friends a lifetime and that is difficult to place a definitive value on. Staff introduced a total of 21 new programs in conjunction with the ice rink this season, which included adaptive skating times for individuals with special needs or sensitivity needs. One mother shared her experience with staff of the joy her son and family experienced when she was able to skate with her son, who is in a wheelchair, together on the ice. We offered a silver skate session for individuals age 55 and older to allow for a slower pace on the ice. A popular program this year was our date night skate night for couples 18 and older and was held after normal business hours. Our concession staff developed unique menu items for the special occasion. The most special program to me was having the honor of hosting Taylor Lipsit, a two-time gold medalist for the U.S. National Sled Hockey Team. Mr. Lipsit demonstrated the ice sled and talked of overcoming a genetic disorder referred to as brittle bone disease. He expressed his gratitude for having the opportunity to skate on the ice with his daughter for the first time and offered to return for the next season to provide the program again. The largest attended program, of course, was our Frozen Sisters visit. The famous sisters sang to a crowd of more than 300 and was available for photographs with their fans. Our very own Olaf Snowman made an appearance as well. Dennison on Ice is truly a regional holiday draw. As you can see from this chart, we welcomed visitors from across the United States. Dennison on Ice has proven to be a multi-generational attraction. It truly is heartwarming to see children, parents and seniors all come together and bond in a family outing of ice skating. The laughter and memories created will be with these families for many years. I would like to wrap up by saying how grateful the team and I are to have had this opportunity to serve our great community through program development that makes such a positive impact on so many lives. This impact is the driving force for our team and we have already began planning for the next season. Some of the exciting plans floating around include offering family packages, more sponsorship opportunities and additional programs. So stay tuned for another exciting year of Dennison on Ice. Thank you.
Questions from council?
Y'all do a wonderful job. Thank you to your crew. And one thing that's not included in that revenue is how much money comes back into our small businesses along Main Street when people come to ice skate and then spend the rest of the day downtown. So I know several of our businesses are in the audience and they really appreciate having this ice skating rink downtown. So thank you.
I think the region would be incredibly disappointed if they couldn't look forward to it every year. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you, Ms. Bowen. There is no need for an executive session this evening and there being no further business to come before... Oh, before I do that, that was information only and requires no action. So now I'll rewind. There is no need for an executive session this evening and there being no further business to come before this body. The time is 6:48 and we stand adjourned.